I'd like to call to order the work session for November 2nd, 2020. We are all present and at this moment, I'm going to turn over to the city clerk.
While the Goodyear City Council meetings are open to the public, the occupancy has been reduced to implement social distancing. Seating is generally available on a first come basis. Face masks are required and must be worn when moving throughout the building. Our residents still have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions and comments to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. And during the meetings, they can actually view the meeting using Facebook, YouTube, and the link from our agenda is using Granicus. After the meetings are completed, they can also be viewed on YouTube. At any time, the public may always contact the mayor and council by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you. We have two items on agenda tonight. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. So bless you. You're welcome. The first item is a discussion to provide policy direction to staff regarding development process improvements. Development Service Director Christopher Baker and Planning Manager Katie Wilkum presenting. Hello there.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Perfect. Thank you very much for bringing that up. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to discuss some ideas that we have for some process improvements. As you know, we are an organization of continuous improvement who challenges the status quo and seeks ongoing excellence. And why do we do that? Fundamentally, the answer is twofold. Because first, we desire to achieve better and more efficient outcomes for our customers and also to create a culture of engaged, empowered employees. So with that kind of framework, if you will, tonight, we're going to do a couple of things. First is we're going to touch on some of our recent improvements just to provide some context for council. The meat of our conversation tonight is going to be to present some ideas and seek some policy direction from council on some ideas that we have. And then, most importantly, we're going to pause at each point in the process in order to have some conversation, answer any questions that you have, and solicit your feedback. So as you all know, we have been on our continuous improvement journey for about five years or so, and we, as an organization, have experienced great success. And now, our customers realize it, too. For example, Rose Law Group says we're the best city to work with in or out of a crisis. Streaming data centers really appreciate working alongside the city of Goodyear in our ongoing partnership. And then, most notably, as council is aware, also, the Arizona Chamber of Commerce identified and awarded the city as the best city for business in the entire state. And that's due in part to streamlined processes. Let me say that again. Streamlined processes, clear expectations for approval, and also effective communication. So with that recent success in mind, here are some of our recent improvements, just to touch on a couple of thumbnails for you. One of our most recent in-house improvements that we did is we instituted what is called a flow cell. And really, what that is, is identifying and creating focused time where different departments can work on the same project at the same time. So really, it's just fundamentally about aligning and focusing resources to the same goal at the same time. What this does is instead of projects dripping through, like a faucet, if you will, toward approval, we can increase the velocity of projects that move through the approval process because development services and engineering are working on the same thing at the same time. When we have done this, we have seen the approvals earned 20 working days faster than normal, which is pretty significant if you think about that. That's very impactful, not only for us, but for our customers as well. Another recent improvement I know that the council is aware of is the launch of electronic plan review. This was launched on April 20th, and prior to that, engineering was 100% digital. Planning was a little bit digital, and building safety was pure paper. So customers had to bring plan sets to the counter. Building safety reviewed them paperwise, provided comments. The customers had to come pick them up. But now, with being digital, all of our applications and plans can be submitted through one place, through an online portal. All the reviews are conducted electronically. The customer replies and revisions to plan sets are electronic, and so are the plan approvals. And it's really important to note that this was all launched and done in the midst of the early, or the early stages of the pandemic, rather, and it really exemplified the adaptability that, and our adherence to core values, if you will, that the staff and the entire development continuum deployed. So as I mentioned, customers no longer have to drive to the city in order to submit plans. And yes, there has been some bumps along the way with the deployment. Some customers are a little more tech savvy than others. But according to our software provider, they've been holding the city up as the exemplary gold standard, for you will, how we have conducted training with our customers, how we've done customer outreach to ensure that they can be successful using the new system. There's a couple of interesting stats on the slide for you. This is as of the first part, or mid-part of October. We've had 4,800 applications come through the system, 3,800 plan approvals through the system, and 91, more than 91,000 individual sheets of plans uploaded into the system since April. So it's a pretty significant number.
Guess so.
So now, we're going to pivot to the point of our discussion tonight, our improvement ideas. And the first one I'd just like to go over is the use permit and special use permit process. Our idea involves amending when this requirement needs to happen, when it is triggered. If we change this requirement, it would require a zoning ordinance text amendment. So that's why we're here, because we'd like to get council feedback on this idea before we begin expending staff time and so forth to rewrite the ordinance to allow this. And just as a reminder, use permits are treated exactly the same as a zoning change. What that means is there's neighborhood meetings, there's property postings, mailings, and things of that nature, all of which that have statutory requirements. Because of all that and the staff reviews, it typically takes about five months or so for a drive-through restaurant, for example, to go from application to council meeting and approval. So our idea for this is to simply delete the requirement for use permits or special use permits when the proposed business is located more than 500 feet away from residential. And this would apply for things such as drive-through restaurants, gas stations, banks, and also cellphone towers. So there's two images on the screen. If I can move my mouse. Where is my mouse? There it is. So there's two images on the screen. This is a shopping center that has a McDonald's with a drive-through and a Taco Bell with a drive-through, but there are no residents within 500 feet. So these two businesses had to go through that process, but there was no impacted residents. In this particular example over here, as you can tell, there's houses and residential adjacent to this, and this is on Estrella Parkway. So a drive-through restaurant or a gas station or so forth located here could have a negative impact on the adjacent residential. So this one would require to come to council, but one that doesn't impact adjacent residential like this, our idea is to just exempt it, and it would be a staff review and approval. So the current state of how these things happen is we have a series of different steps. As I mentioned, it takes about five months. Goes through pre-applications, they apply, there's staff review, it holds public meetings at the Planning and Zoning Commission, who makes a recommendation, and there's public hearings at council, and then ultimately approve. As I mentioned before, there's the statutory notice requirements and so forth, and this all, by the time you add up all of these different steps, takes about five months. And it is important to note that it does cost the applicant time, which is money, but also hard money, too, to go through this process. And it also frankly costs the city money as well, and staff time, to prepare these items for public hearings and so forth. So the proposed process, if one of these drive-throughs is further away than 500 feet from residential, would be to eliminate the public hearing process at Planning Commission and council. And that would save approximately two months of time and get the businesses opened three months sooner. Not only does this serve the customer better, but it also frees up staff time from, again, the cars and the presentations and things of that nature. And we can redeploy that staff time to work on other projects that can help our other customers be more efficient as well. Lastly, I'll point out in this particular instance that a typical drive-through restaurant, typical one, roughly generates about $10,000 worth of sales tax a month. So if we can open them sooner, two months sooner, that's an additional $20,000 to the city, roughly, I'm using round numbers, roughly to the city that much in advance. So not only is there a benefit to the residents, but because we're creating another eating opportunity, for example, if you use the drive-through restaurant, for example, but we're also helping the city out financially as well. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over and ask the question, if council is supportive of deleting the use permit, when those are more than 500 feet away from residential properties?
All right, I'm going to ask who wants to start this conversation off. Councilman Fazillo?
Want to go back just a few steps. When you were talking about the electronic processing, I remember a while back, we had some issues where unfortunately, you had the architects that would blame the city because they weren't being, the owner wasn't being notified because they weren't fixing electronically. You're still sending copies to the owner so they know if the architect's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. The holdup is not on the city's part, but on who you've hired to do the work?
Yeah, the short answer to that question is yes. It kind of depends on how they upload it and who they want to get notified, but we do make sure that people are notified of the applications and so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we do that because I know in the past, I had one of those issues where I had somebody calling me all the time about the city doing not this, but it wasn't the city, it was his architect that was not complying with the request that the city had put in. So I think that's real important to keep, for full transparency, to keep everybody in the loop, you know, as that goes. As far as this, I can't think off the top of my mind why we would want to send something where nobody's going to give you feedback unless I'm missing something. I'll turn it over to the others, but I think the idea kind of makes sense to me personally.
Brandon?
Yeah, I agree also. I appreciate the process that happened there as well, and how you're going to save the time and how the process works. But yeah, I also agree. I think this is a good thing as well. We can save time and effort on staff and also for our customers or our business community as well. So yeah, I like the idea how you have it here, the 500 feet residential, and yeah, how you proposed it. So I'm on board. So thank you.
Bill?
Christopher, can you go back to slide nine?
Going the wrong way, I'm sorry. Yeah, Katie.
One more.
Thank you.
So just to remind the rest of the council, the irony of the picture on the right is that's up in Estrella. We actually had a lengthy discussion about the McDonald's special use permit there and limiting their hours.
Remember that one.
Even though that's less than 500 feet away, there was still some concern about that being open throughout longer periods of night. There was a lot of concern from the community about that, and it was the special use permit that brought that to council that allowed that conversation to happen, which then allowed that stipulation to be in place that, and I think we shut it off at midnight until Walgreens became 24 hours or something to that effect. So there was a tie in there. So I think things like that in the future, we're going to miss that opportunity to care for the folks that may be greater than 500 feet away, but who are going to be impacted by that project. While I'm all for speeding things up, I'm always very concerned about abdicating our responsibility as council to the staff. If it was originally envisioned that that was our responsibility, then there's some piece of that. And I don't know the resolution to it because I'm sure that is probably the only time in probably 20 years that that has happened. But it was very important for the Estrella community that we took action that night on that issue. So I'm not entirely sure how we resolve that. So I just want to remind everybody, so I'm not, I haven't decided yet.
Sherry?
It's so funny you mention that because that's exactly what I was going to say. That McDonald's, oh, and there was also the storage facility up there. That was a very big deal.
Oh, that was a big one.
It was a use permit. So I have to echo Councilmember Stip's, Bill's, what he said, because also, when that McDonald's went up there, that discussion of the use permit actually led to adding speed humps by the daycare center and getting the light up by the Star Point, which Joe and Bill found the money for. So I think that led to a bigger discussion on the growth in that area. So although, you know, we have great staff now, just like we don't want to bind further councils, I do concern, you know, when you retire and, you know, and people move on, it might be hard to go back and reverse this. If there was some way that we could speed the process and still get the public comment so we could see if it was an issue, you know, I don't know if there's a different way to do that, if we're changing the processes or the way we could get some public comment so we don't miss those issues. Like I said, that McDonald's, that storage facility never came because there was such an uproar on that. And I have a feeling that had that gone through, there would have been a big outcry because the residents over there didn't want it. And that was a use permit. So I don't know how to fix that issue, so maybe.
May I make two comments or suggestions, too? One, the storage facility was adjacent.
It wasn't what?
It was adjacent to residential, so that would still require a use permit.
No, it wasn't. There's no.
It was within 500 feet of residential.
What, if you go over the mountain?
Yeah, we still measure as the code applies.
Okay, yeah, but I think that's more of a technicality saying it's 500 feet, but it's kind of was by a gas station.
But one point I do want to make, even though banks are listed on here, except for a couple PEDs, banks do not require a use permit. So you can have a drive-through at a bank, and you can have a drive-through at personal services, like a laundromat. So just to give some context and history, the reason drive-throughs became use permits a long time ago was to discourage their use, was to try and limit the number of them. By creating a public process, they wouldn't open, which has not happened. They are going through the process, but that's why this limitation was put on fast food restaurants, but it was not put on.
Other things.
All drive-throughs. And I also want to make the point, too, is we can write regulations. So if there's certain regulations that need to be written in, such as, you know, the hours of operation shall be X in this condition, we can build those regulations.
Yeah, and Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Lortano, if I can. We're not proposing to exclude self-storage facilities from this process. Really, it's just drive-throughs, gas stations, banks, and cellphone towers.
And I think it's a great idea. I'm not against it. It's just I think we need to make sure we have a way that that conversation with the residents, like I said, the whole McDonald's fiasco actually led to a couple other things that had it not gone, the community had the input, probably would have missed. And then, on the other hand, when we also look at that whole McDonald's issue, a lot of people did not understand what the use permit was for, was for the drive-through, and thought it was we could prohibit at McDonald's. So I think you have both. So I'd like to somehow keep comments somehow, but I don't know, you know.
Wally?
Well, I agree with you because now, life is a drive-through. Everybody's going through a drive-through. And if someone's going to open up a restaurant in Goodyear, if they want to make money, they're going to have to have a drive-through. And if we can help them open quicker, that would be great. I distinctly remember the conversation about the Estrella McDonald's. People did not want McDonald's, period, because they were going to make the Bagel Shop go out of business, and it didn't happen. And I spoke that night at this meeting saying, it's a wonderful opportunity to give our children a place to work up in McDonald's and a place to go, because there's no place to go. And that's how it came in. And perhaps in the grand scheme of things, maybe they never wanted a McDonald's at all up there, but it's there and it's doing very well. And I'm glad it's up there for the simple reason it's keeping kids that are up there not coming down the hill, when they don't have any way to come down the hill anyway to go to McDonald's. So if you can make it easier for the merchants to open quicker and save them money, I think we're going to attract more of them in our city. And I just trust you, both of you and all of you in your department, that if there is information coming out that the residents are opposed, I'm sure there is something we can do about it. We can put it on a hearing, or we can do something. I mean, it's not like it's a done deal. And I assure you that if you get a request for a drive-through and you get 15 or 20 neighbors calling you and raising ruckus that they don't want it, you're going to listen to them and then figure out how we're going to make it work. Because we don't want to lose these businesses. But they want drive-throughs, so, you know. Chick-fil-A, I don't think is ever going to open their dining room because they're doing such a great business in the drive-through. Double A, you know, so. But no, I don't see a problem with, y'all are, you're the ones that are supposed to figure out how to make us business-friendly and keep us business-friendly. And we don't see what you see every day, and we just have to rely on you coming forward with your suggestions. And I can guarantee you, if you don't think it's going to work, you're going to be back here telling us it's not going to work. So.
Laura?
Well, first, I want to thank you for your continuous work on improvement. I think that's what keeps us moving and definitely getting that recognition, and well done. So this is interesting. I wasn't here for the McDonald's, but I was here for the Starbucks on Pebble Creek Parkway, where we had a lot of discussion about that. And I think what we've seen, especially since COVID and such, is the backup of the lines. That's probably the biggest thing, impeding traffic in the lots and allowing people to get in and out. But I was thinking, can you establish like a threshold? If you get so many responses or something from the public, then that could trigger a hearing or something.
Mayor, council, thank you for that. I was actually just writing that same note. I think that's something that we need to collaborate with our friends in legal on because if we allow it, and we have to treat similarly situated properties the same, otherwise we could be, yes, I wasn't going to say that, but yes. So I don't know if, Ror, you want to weigh in on that right now?
I think that would be very difficult to do.
Take it under advisement.
I do, yeah.
Every neighborhood is different, different in ages. Are you finished? Because I'm going to speak up. So I think, the first thing I thought of when you brought up the suggestion, that's fine, but we have to educate the public before we actually enter into this. So that, I'm not saying let them vote on it, I'm just saying we're going to make a good business decision here, because that is exactly what we want to do. And so many times, smaller businesses, they don't get the breaks. And this might open the door to some other things that the smaller businesses have been concerned about, that maybe we could polish some of that and make it a little easier and less costly. So, but I have to tell you, you got to be ready, you know, to start your publication, however you're going to do it, but it has to be something that gets everybody's attention. And then be sure you tell them why. And so it's all taxpayers' money that we use or working on there, and I don't think they really realize that. So it's part of our structure of our city. And sometimes they don't have to pay for that. Sometimes I think they should have to pay for certain things, but there are things we do not. So, but just watch for the storm and be ready for it, because I think you're going to get it.
The storm of what?
The people. The people are saying, using storm as anger or as telling us what we're doing wrong and how we should do it, and where they came from, they never did this. And after all, you're just trashing our city. I could go on and on and on from all the past experiences we've had. Not that they're wrong in their feelings, it's their feelings, and that's how they perceive it. So when we do these things, we have to be ready, you know, to be able to combat it, at least understand to them, say, you know, I can understand how you feel, but, you know, the city is moving forward, and we think this is going to help us, and it's going to help the companies and businesses that come in. But we have to prepare that program and put it out. Sherry?
Yeah, I'm not against it. I just would like some way for the public to be able to know about it, because the last thing we want is like, oops, here's the drive-through, and, you know, then we get the people coming in and, you know. So if there's some way to do it, I don't know, like you said, of the cutoff, but if some way, at least you could get the comments, or, you know, that we have at least some sort of input, and then you can see if there's another issue that red flags out of it, that's like, oh.
We always have the dais.
Yeah, well, that way.
I mean, they can come and, you know.
Well, that's what I mean. So if they know what the people are saying.
Sure.
Then they could kind of funnel it to us if like, for the McDonald's, I'm using this as the example, that, oh, there's a traffic issue here that's being brought up or something along those lines.
I'm sure they're going to come speak at some of our council meetings. I mean, I think that's, you know.
Because we won't know what's out there.
No, that's the good venue of it all, that they'll have their time to speak for how they want. So it may not change the vote, but, you know, they have that right. Yes.
I got a couple I want to hear, Ror. Can we use it as a gauge, public comment? And then, second, how does the public know that we're doing this, I guess?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Council, I'm not aware of a, I mean, it's almost like a zoning protest sort of concept that seems that we're talking about there. I'm not aware of any cities handling them that way. I'm not saying it's wrong, but I think we'll have to do a little bit more research on that because you're not really functioning in your legislative capacity in these use permits. You're kind of in administrative capacity is what the law really says. You are, as Councilmember Lortano referencing, you're supposed to be looking at traffic, you're supposedly looking at the impacts of the surrounding area, which may lend itself to that notification process and that opportunity for input. So we're going to have to do a little research on that because we haven't really thought that one through, but it's an interesting idea.
Well, I think that we went through these processes when we tried to get electronic, right, at the desk. I mean, when were we hit with that? But remember how long ago that was? The businessmen got ahold of us and said, we're the only city not doing that?
Yeah, I remember that.
And we brought it to the staff, and the staff says, no, we're not doing that. And so it's taken all this time to do it. So it's just like, it's a process. I'm sorry. Bill, did you have your hand up? No? Brandon?
I understand the process. So if we take this out, and then, how does the public, is the public notified if I see just a sign up on the road, or is there a notice to the neighborhood? I don't think there's anything like that. Can it just come through and?
So Mayor, if I may.
Yes, may.
To answer that question, if we, so let me back up one second. We're hearing a little bit different things. Some are supportive and others would like some, an opportunity for public notice. And we can certainly give public notice and solicit feedback from residents. If we were to do that, it would, we would follow our normal procedure, which would be property posting and also mailing within 500 feet and to adjacent HOAs. So that's what, and also like ads in the paper and so forth. That's our typical process right now. So.
For the.
For use permits, right. Correct.
May I jump in here? I also think there might be some confusion, too, because what we're proposing is not requiring a use permit at all, not changing it. So a business would only go through a site plan, which is a fully administrative process. There is no notices in a site plan. When someone builds anything that doesn't require a use permit, there's no notice to a neighborhood. One day, someone can start building next to your house, as long as it's not a use that requires a use permit. It's only these use permit uses that require some notice because council wants to reserve the authority to put special conditions on the use that are more property-specific. We can put conditions on uses that apply to all uses everywhere. Use permit uses are meant to be those uses where the location matters of where it is. So I do want to, you know, because if we go through a process where we're going to do some notices, that would probably require some kind of use permit. The customer would have to pay that fee.
Save any time.
It's not really providing that. But, I mean, I think we're hearing you loud and clear on the concerns, and we can brainstorm ways to address that.
I still like it like this.
Laura?
So in the McDonald's example that was provided, it wasn't necessarily the drive-through that was the issue, it was the whole McDonald's. Is that correct? So when you say that it's done administratively, so in this case, if if it, there's no drive-through, it's just done, you do a site review and then it comes up. It's only the drive-through that brings it to us. And, and as we're seeing, the world has changed quite a bit. We're no longer, I think, discouraging it. I think we're seeing, I mean, just as Wally was saying, I mean, tremendous use of, of drive-through and, and mobile food services and things. And, and that could be the trend going forwards. So I don't know, I don't know that so much. As long as you can work out the, the queuing of the cars and the ingress and egress and all that. I mean, that seems to be the biggest thing that I've seen is, is just how cars get all stacked up.
Right.
Anybody else? Bill?
You know, we, everything, you know, if we base everything going forward on the current condition and everything's a drive-through and no one's using their inside restaurant, we're going to go back to inside restaurants. And I think we've had a lot of very painful lessons. We look at, we look at the Dutch Bros at Indian School and Litchfield. And there was a lot of discussion on the council about that particular, now that's within 500 feet, so that would have come anyway, but just pretend that it wasn't. That was, there was a lot of concern about that and we went ahead and said yes anyway. And businesses closed because of that, of that condition there because of the drive-throughs. And, and they've gone through a couple of iterations to try to ease some of the pain and suffering for the people that are in that strip mall. I think we, we have to be really, really careful. And the next Dutch Bros that came in, the one on Estrella Parkway, we all sat here and said, oh, now that is, I think, well, far away from, at the time was greater than 500 feet. So we, it would have gone through staff process. But I think we were pretty clear in making sure that there was ample room for queuing and double lanes and all the rest of that, that you would never have had the benefit of that discussion on that particular property. So the, we've had some really good discussions on these special use permits. And I realize that, you know, we're probably talking, like I said, two out of 100 that, that we've had it. But that's putting a lot of onus on the staff. And we're the ones that are responsible for it. We're the ones that are supposed to be defending our, the residents of, from these problems from occurring. And we're going to turn that over to the staff, which then means we're going to sit here angry at the staff because something happened that we had given up.
Don't agree with, no.
Yeah. It's a, it's a catch-22 for the staff because we're like, well, this was a pretty straightforward thing. But meanwhile, this other, this other thing occurred. Like I said, I, I don't know where I, where I stand on it, but because I absolutely agree that 99 out of 100 times, this is a non-issue. And, and maybe it's a matter before this comes forward in a, in a, in an ordinance, we really talk about these things that have mattered. What are they? What are the, what are the queuing standards? What are the double lane standards? Make us feel comfortable giving you this authority that we can, that we can comfortably say, you know what? I think, I think the McDonald's thing was a one-off. You're right, they, they didn't want McDonald's as a company up there. But the way to at least strike a middle and let the residents know that we were protecting them was the, well, we're going to shut this off at midnight, the same as the Walgreens until they go. And the traffic light came out of that. And, you know, the, the traffic flows and some of the rest of that. The same thing with the discussion on Dutch Bros on, on Estrella. We were able to say, okay, now we see how this is laid out. We were reassured of that, even though we knew when the first one went in that we were going to have problems. So I think there's a middle, middle ground there that we've got to, this can't be a one and done, that yeah, council's good and then off we go. Because I don't know that we are entirely good. I think we're 99% good.
Joe?
Just to follow up on that conversation, I, I think really the key is queuing. Because as I go around and, and see, and Wally probably got a better version because she loves going through drive-throughs, is that especially the one on, what is it, the Estrella Parkway where the Starbucks is and Popeyes. I mean, sometimes you can't even get in there because of that backup. So I, I think going, going forward, a lot of it's going to have to be, we've got to figure out when these come in here on these drive-throughs on, take a look to make sure the queuing's right. Because again, going back to the Dutch Bros on Indian School, they moved that pretty good, but what happened is you lost a lot of parking spaces for those businesses that are on the other side of their Dutch Bros because it all gets eaten up. And then sometimes when you go in there, you can't even turn into the other shops because they've got them wrapped around. So to me, we got to figure out a way that at least we get some buy-off on, on the queuing to make sure that that's not going to be an issue. And if you can put that in there, that would make me feel much better on there. But I always have a problem if we're sending 500 notices and people out 500 feet and there ain't nobody there and we just ate up two months, that I got a problem with. You know what I mean? So we've got to be a happy medium in there somewhere. But I think going forward, queuing is going to be an issue. And again, even if we end up going, going back in the restaurants, you don't want to build it so that if something does happen again, that you're back in the same boat because you didn't take care of the queuing issue. So we got to figure that queuing issue out anyway. So, thank you.
Sherri?
Yeah, I agree with, with what he said. The other one is Culvers. It was, I think it, I think one thing we have to tell our, our businesses is that you are going to be more and more successful than you think you are. Because what happens with that one with the queuing issue is that one that people queue all the way around. And if you park in certain spaces, you can't get out of the restaurant if you go in. So I, yeah, I think we could work out something like that and set some really good standards. And then, you know, if obviously something comes up, you guys can let us know and we can hammer those out.
One thing you have to think about is that in marketing, you see a lot of cars someplace, you get excited and say, it's a good place to go. The people, I mean, the Dutch Brothers have worked, that's been their base. It's people standing in line for that long a time to get that coffee. So we don't want to kill marketing. So I think we have to make some compromises a little bit. So I want, and from my perspective, I don't want us to do that. I don't want us to kill the marketing. I want them to continue to, to have people lined up to go in their business, you know. And because I'm alone now, I, I go to a lot of them. But let's leave it up to the merchant to, to do well at how they serve. It's their business, they have to speed it up. If there's something within those businesses that we can help them with that would give them that, some extra process in their, in their restaurant, I don't know what it would be, or their drive-in. I think that's important. So that's, I, I just want to make sure that, because people say that all the time. Oh my God, look at the traffic, you know. How many years have we been saying, we need traffic? Nobody's going to anything. They can't make it. So, I mean, it's that double dilemma that we go through. But it's very important when we look at this, we need to support these businesses. We need to make sure that, now, we don't like to stand in line. Just, you just kind of learn to live with it now because that's the way society is changing. I don't think we could make any restaurant now that's a drive-through that wouldn't be crowded, maybe a certain time of day. But they're all crowded all the time, no matter how big the parking lot is, no matter how anything they're busy. I agree with you when the parking places for the brick and mortar ones, that, that, that does, that does concern me sometimes. And I know you've put some signs out or I've seen the signs out that you can only have, and you know, you can't park there. So they give them some spaces. But there are businesses don't have heavy traffic. So you could have all those spots out there and say, no parking unless it's other business. And you're going to get one or two people parking in them. So it's really hard to judge businesses against businesses. So my comments.
Mayor, if I may for a second, just to generally take the temperature of council, obviously, it's not a vote, this is a work session. So I think what I heard is generally the council's supportive. We need to figure out maybe some public notice and also some design regulations regarding queuing and things of that nature. But generally, if we can figure that stuff out, the council would, appears to be generally supportive of the concept.
Okay.
That's what I heard on that one.
Ready for the next one?
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure because it sounded like too, there weren't major concerns regarding gas stations or cell towers.
Would you say talk?
It's really the drive-throughs or the fast food that are so busy.
Would you talk in the microphone? Because you're not.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It sounded like there weren't any major concerns about gas stations or cell towers, you know.
I think the only major issue for me is the education of the public. That's, that's.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So we have a couple more to go through. Loved the discussion, but we do want to.
Well, that's what we're here for.
Keep, keep moving along. Because we have a lot, we have a lot of ideas. I'm sorry, Katie. Oh, I went too far. That's here.
Okay, so the next item is, we had a couple items that we wanted to discuss making permitted uses. So the first one are churches or places of worship. Currently, they require use permit or special use permit in any zoning district. Not to delve too deeply into it, but there is zoning case law referred to as RALUPA, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which limits the type, you know, how much you can regulate churches. And generally, most cities do not require any kind of zoning or use permit action for a place of worship or a church because of this RALUPA. We're one of the very few. And in recent months, we have been questioned about that by some places of worship that have come to us. So we would like to look into allowing churches by right. This is going to take a lot of research, a lot of discussions with our legal department. We can regulate items such as parking. So we would look at, again, not just opening the door, but creating regulations. Parking is typically the largest issue with places of worship. The next one is city facilities. So in every city deals with these differently. But in the city of Goodyear, we do, based on council direction, as best we can, have city projects meet the same standards and processes that the private projects have to do. However, there are certain city facilities that are unique in nature, such as wells and lift stations. Right now, those require use permit. What's ironic.
Or they don't.
They do require use permit. So it goes through that same process we just went through. However, we can't apply these standards to other municipalities. So the city of Avondale could drill a well in Goodyear and we couldn't require them to get a use permit. So we are treating ourselves differently than we treat others. Also, as you can imagine, some of these facilities, such as wells, are very needed. So if we went through the use permit process and residents had concerns about the well, we might not have a lot of options. So it could put council in a tough spot of, do we provide water or address the concerns of residents? Again, this would be an issue where we would create design regulations. Usually aesthetics and noise would be the complaints of these. So we can make sure we have good regulations, work with our CIP team and the Public Works team to make sure the regulations work for Goodyear. We're one of the few cities that require these processes for these types of facilities. Now again, we would leave more possibly intrusive uses, such as like a wastewater treatment facility, we would still require a rezone process for that because of its size and potential impact. The final use we wanted to look at is home daycares. There is actually discrepancy in the zoning ordinance. In one area, it says you can have up to three kids and not need to get a use permit. In another area, it says you can have up to five kids, but we're, we have to go with the more restrictive. And it's pretty typical across the valley to allow up to five children in your home without getting a use permit. This has actually been something, I think there's an increased desire for home daycare with everything that's going on. So we actually have had an uptick in inquiries about home-based daycare. So we would like to get in line with other cities, also with state requirements. Again, as you can imagine, traffic, drop-off, pickup are the big concerns when you have a daycare in a home. But five children seems reasonable. Often with these, there's even siblings. So again, we can bring you research, look more detailed at what other cities do. And so that is it for this section. So again, I can go back so you can look at the regulations, but.
Wow. You know, with the schools now that are now going back down to lockdown, is my understanding. Has there been any demand out there? I guess they're not really daycares, but parents grouping together and bringing maybe first, second, third graders type of thing in, five at a shot, more than five, would they, I would assume that would be in violation in that to set them up in the home because, you know, that or the kids would be by themselves trying to do their homework because the parents got to go and work. How would that fall into this type of thing? Because something's got to be done for that. My biggest concern is the schools start to lock down again, is parents still have to work. Are they leaving that six-year-old home to try to work a computer and do the homework? As opposed to maybe some of them are pooling resources together that are stay-at-home parents, whether a man or, or a female that are actually there overseeing the kids while they do their homework, you know, and do the stuff. So you do have some supervision there. Would that fall into that? Do we have any control over that? Because I suspect there's got to be demand for some of that out there.
Thank you. Basically, if you're not a school, you're a daycare. So what you're describing in my mind would be a daycare, you know, watching children. Because, and I can't remember, I'm going off the top of my head. I want to say it's up to 12 years old. It would be considered daycare. I should also note that that number of children doesn't include your own children. So, you know, if your friend or neighbor drops off their kids at your house and your kids plus their kids equal five, your own children don't count in that number for licensing. I don't know if I can answer all the details of your question. That's one thing we want to delve more deeply into the state licensing regs and kind of rely on this, you know, come in line with what the state requires in the state licensing, while also making sure we're not creating any traffic issues that might happen.
Yeah, my, my guess is that some of these daycare facilities are performing those services to allow the kids to do their homework where they're not home by themselves, the young ones type of thing. So, yeah, I'd be, I'd be curious to see where that's kind of going, if you're getting any demand for those type of things out there.
Wally?
Well, I know a couple of mothers that get together and trade off where a couple of the kids, they're all in the same grade and they come over to the house and they're there during school until the mother comes home or whatever. They don't charge, so they're not in the business of providing daycare, but they're just doing it to help out. And I, I just want us to, I like us limiting it to five or saying five or more, then you have to get a use permit. But I don't want us to come down on those parents that are just trying to take care of their kids and make sure their kids are safe. If I had to work full-time and I had children at home, I would be a wreck. I wouldn't leave them alone by themselves in a house unsupervised for the eight hours I would be out of the home. I don't know what these parents are going to do, but I don't want to add any more sorrow to them. But I do like, I'd like us to conform where we're normal, like the other cities. Because for years, we have been known that we have very strict regulations. We have not been very friendly and we seem to have rules that no one else seems to have. So I appreciate you taking a look at some of the rules we have and changing them or bringing them in to conform with other, other cities. And like you say, I don't want to shoot us in the foot anymore. Enough's enough.
Sherri?
Thank you for bringing it forward. I don't have problems with any of those. I agree with Wally. I, I've heard what Joe's talking about, the pod schools where these parents are either hiring a teacher or getting on care.com and then they're all chipping in to pay for somebody. I don't think that fits a daycare. And I don't, like what Wally said, I don't want to punish the parents because if, if my kids were little now, I wouldn't be able to work or I would have to hire somebody or I, like they're doing cooperatives. Parents are being very creative and I don't want to do something. I, I envision what you're talking about here as like a pre-COVID structured daycare type of thing. These are emergency situations, even if it's six or seven kids, pre-COVID structured daycare type of thing, these emergency situations, even if it's six or seven kids, if these parents are all getting together. Because I think they're trying to keep the kids in the bubble. Whoever is in our bubble, we can have schools, so if we're all the Tuesday, Thursday kids, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we're going to all be in the same bubble. So I just want to make sure we don't punish them. I know you guys won't, but I just want to make sure that we have some sort of exemption for those parents, because I think it's going to get worse before it gets better.
Mayor, if I may, just for clarification, this is really for business. If it's a daycare, if it's a business.
Do they need a business license then for that?
They have to get registered from the state, and then they will also have to.
So these are the actual daycare.
Like a business, yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Me too.
That's, that's fine. I just want to make sure, like what Wally said, that we don't, and intentionally make other people think this applies to them.
Laura?
Well, I also wanted to bring up the microschools. I, I've been hearing a lot about prenda, which are neighborhood microschools, and that seems to be sort of a trend, looking at how education is evolving during this time. So, yeah, don't want to impede them. Now, regarding churches, it's kind of interesting. I recall a case in a city where I used to work, where somebody had built a building in the backyard and called it a church. And it, it hit the news and things like that, because you certainly have to have some type of safety regulations, ingress, egress, all, you know, fire suppression and things. And then, of course, parking was a huge issue. So I think I'd be interested to know how this could impact residential areas.
Brandon?
Yeah, same thing with churches as well. So I think that's good, just look at parking and all those different things. And then the home daycares, I just wanted to verify, so if you, for business, obviously, five and under, if it's a business, still a business, you're not, you don't need a license, you don't need to go through the city, right? Just under five.
It's under, under five.
If it's under, my understanding, again, we're going to do more research. We wanted the green light from you before we delve too much, but my understanding is you don't require a state license if it's under five.
Okay, okay.
And so that's what we want our zoning regulations to kind of meet up with state licensing.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you looking into those things. And then I know, I'm sure you need a permit also for the statewide, for the schools that I think are like a charter slash homeschool kind of hybrid type thing, too. So I imagine that's, I think that's a newer thing like the last couple of years, so. But, okay, I imagine that's something different. So, okay, no, I'm good with the rest of it. I'd be curious, I guess the question is around, you said, we require ourselves to have a permit for wells and lifts, but you said another city could come and dig a well in our, without our permission?
Yes, we, we can't apply our regulations to other cities. And there was actually, I'm going to get the details wrong. I don't know if Rourke remembers. There was a case, I think it was between Scottsdale and Tempe, where one city built a wastewater treatments facility in the other city, and they couldn't do anything about it.
Yeah, let's go take, let's go take Avondale's water, if we can do that. I mean, okay. Okay, I was just curious. Yeah, it'd be nice to clean that up a little, look into that more, too. So, thank you.
Would you clarify the churches? When you talked about construction of churches, about, just, I, I just didn't quite get that, because I remember a church that Ron and I attended, and they had an addition built onto the church. And we actually left the church because of the discussion blaming the city. And I brought everybody in from the city to talk to them, and they did a number of engineering faults on that, as well as, I think it was a fire, or something to do with the fire, too. So they ended up having two engineering plans, and it kind of vacillated between, I don't know if they realized it, between the two. So just kind of help me through this church, you know, and if you look down Saravelle, we've got Church Row there. It goes right around the corner now. So I'm just curious, just tell me what you were trying to tell me earlier.
Thank you. So we're just focused on the zoning regulations. So right now, they require a special use permit. So they do have to go through the public process. And what we're proposing is allowing them outright, to, you know, totally herd the concerns about parking, and especially if these were to locate in residential. It is important to note that we would still require the same building and engineering requirements. And that can be a problem for some of these churches, especially like when they go into like a former commercial space, and that commercial space might not have been built for an assembly use. So sometimes there is extra cost, and sometimes the church doesn't understand. And sometimes it's, well, if the church across the street did it, well, that commercial center happened to be built to the right standards. And so it can be confusing, because often when we're working with these churches, you know, they're, they're obviously working within a budget. We're trying to help them through the process. So what we're proposing is just to try and help them through the entitlement process. And again, partly because there is case law protecting churches, specifically.
But they still have a number, a number of people in the church, the, the fire and the, all the other little things we check through, you know.
Yes, that would still, all that occupancy load is under the building code, and we wouldn't propose changing anything with regards to the building codes.
Correct. No, no, you're, thank you. Mayor, Council, Katie's exactly right. What we're just talking about is the location of the use only. The church, churches, new, old, established, whatever addition, whatever the case may be, would still need to meet the building and life safety codes, fire codes and things of that nature.
Thank you for clarifying, yeah.
So we're not proposing to change any of that. It's just the use that, of the church.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Anything else?
Not from us. But keep up the good work. Wow, thank you so much.
We have, we have more, but wait, there's more.
Oh, there's more? We have, we have two items tonight, so.
Oh, lordy. We have lots of ideas.
The second item is a discussion to provide policy direction to staff regarding development.
Oh, we got a little more. We still have a few more, few more slides on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
We have lots of ideas on process improvement.
I thought you were done.
I do, too. So we wanted to discuss preliminary plots with you. You might remember that we had a work session, was it 2017, I think? Three years ago, regarding preliminary plots. Again, you know, and in that case, we were requesting to not have them be an administrative process. So that's not what we're proposing tonight, but we are proposing some possible process changes. The first would be to place preliminary plots on the consent agenda. And so there wouldn't be a staff presentation. And actually, to give you some context on that, some of you may remember, we used to have preliminary plots on the consent agenda. And then when the downturn happened, and there wasn't a lot going on, we started discussing preliminary plots. Now that we're busy again, it could help streamline council meetings to put those on the consent agenda. It's also very helpful to the customer, if they're on consent, because when they're on the regular agenda, it makes them nervous, and they'll have their zoning attorney come, and several people come. Where if it's on consent, they feel more comfortable maybe sending one representative. Again, they've been reviewed by both staff and the planning commission, and as always, council has the right to pull a preliminary plot if there is a specific preliminary plot that warrants discussion or questions.
I think that's an easy one.
The next couple items is, right now, one extension of a preliminary plot is allowed. Basically, when council approves a preliminary plot, it's good for one year. And if they want to extend it, they go back to commission and council for that extension. And what we're recommending is a one-time administrative extension. If this was granted, staff would not be permitted to change any of the stipulations of approval. That would have to go to council if they wanted to modify the plot or modify the stipulations. The next point is, so the reason we have preliminary plots is we're required to by state law. In order to adopt a final plot, you have to find it in conformance of the preliminary plot. But state law does say that if it's a plot of 10 or fewer lots, you can waive the preliminary plot requirement. Many cities utilize this process to streamline certain plots. And the reason this is really important is this impacts most greatly, commercial and industrial developments. They have to go through the preliminary plot process, and they do a lot of redundant work, because most of the engineering work is the same between a pre-plot and a site plan. And so they're going through it multiple times. And just to, I pulled some information. So since the beginning of 2018, there were 12 projects that could potentially take advantage of skipping pre-plot, because they went through site planning, they're still going through all the engineering work. And these included Compass Data Center, Prologis, and Cotton Flower Marketplace was the most recent example of an already-built development. But because of our regulations, they had to go through the public process. Finally, again, final plots. You might remember, years ago, we used to have no deadline for recording a final plot. It was open forever. That was not a good situation. So we instilled a deadline, and they have 90 days to record the final plot. However, there are sometimes situations where they need an extension. And again, right now, they have to go to council for that extension. And we would like to ask if staff could have the authority to grant a one-time extension. And the reason why this can be really important to applicants is sometimes the land deals require the final plot to be approved before they'll sell property. But they're often needing to get signatures from entities such as Liberty Water or RID. And so our customers are stuck in this little, I need to get my council approval so that we can finish the land transaction, but Liberty's still going to take four or five weeks to, before they sign my plot. And so allowing this administrative extension would allow staff to, hey, in those circumstances that pop up, we could approve that. But again, staff would not be authorized to amend or modify any of the stipulations council approved. We couldn't amend or modify the plot.
Comments? Bill?
I just, I have a question. I'm good with everything. The 10 or fewer, no preliminary plot required.
Right.
Is a final plot required?
Yes.
And a final plot would then come before the council?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Joe?
Yeah, I've always had a problem with the preliminary plot being on the consent agenda. Only reason by, reason why, that's the only time where council has the right to really put any of its say into the preliminary plot. It's my understanding, once that's been approved, it's kind of hard to kick out a final plot approval. So that's why I always have heartburn on getting rid of the preliminary plot, because that's, to me, we get rid of our, our responsibility to the citizens by putting that on the consent agenda. Now, I realize that we can pull it, but it won't make any sense if it comes in, and I got to pull every preliminary plot that you pull on there. So it kind of defeats the purpose at that point. But that's why I have an objection on, on the preliminary plots, because that's our only really authority to have any real input on that plot itself.
Brandon?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of an example, like the Todd Lot, that was a preliminary plot, right, over by behind Aldi's? And some of the other little changes that we made, was that true?
Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, that was zoning, not, not the plot.
That was zoning?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I guess to Councilmember Pizzillo's spot, we can make the changes at the preliminary spot, too, right?
Well, council, I was going to say, council can make some changes. Again, it's not a public hearing process.
Yeah.
So there, there's some, I mean, if the applicant agrees to it, you can request a change. Zoning is the appropriate place to make requests changes, especially if you're going to require something that's going to cost money of the development.
Okay. So zoning and rezoning type projects, that's where we can require certain use, certain things for that property. But preliminary plot, we couldn't, we still couldn't really, we had to, we, we could say we'd like it, but they could say no, essentially.
If the applicant argued back on it, we could be in a tough spot. Now, a good example would be, I think it was the Hudson Commons preliminary plot, where I believe Councilmember Pizzillo brought up the issue with the secondary access, and the applicant agreed. That's the instance.
Oh, that was Goodyear Planned Regional Center, like.
Oh, okay.
With the secondary access.
KB Home Project.
Yeah, KB Home Project off of Temple Creek Parkway.
Yeah. Okay, okay. I just want to clarify. Have we had too many, a lot of 10, only 10 lots? 10 house lots?
Thank you, Councilmember. We're gonna, again, we wanted to get feedback from council before we really delved in it. We need to investigate if this would be something open to residential. With the 10 or fewer lots, we really had in mind the non-residential developments. Because they go through the site plan process already, so we're already doing that preliminary engineering work, the preliminary design review, looking at traffic, all of that work. So it, you know, but in a smaller residential development, that might not, that preliminary work may still need, be needed. And again, in the last like two years, there's been 12 projects that could have benefited from having a streamlined process.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm good with this right here.
Trying to clear the repetition. Okay, I just threw this all, that's, that's what I finally come to terms with, that's what you're trying to do, because that's what takes the additional time with the same information, basically. Okay? Any other, yeah, Joe?
I'm in agreement with everything else. The only problem I have is the preliminary plots on the consent agenda. Because it's my understanding, once that preliminary plot's approved, pretty much the final is, it's a foregone conclusion. You put the finals on the, on the consent agenda, as long as they follow the preliminary plot. But preliminary plot's the only time when council has some input, at least from my perspective, on it. Now, even if everything is, is okay, it's still the only really input you have, because once it comes to final, you're just kind of approving what was the preliminary plot. So if the council's going to have any input into it at all, to me, it would be the preliminary plot process, so. But everything else, I don't have a problem with.
So thank you for the discussion. We're on our last process improvement idea of the evening. So this one has to do with our site plan and construction document, which is CD's process. Currently, the ordinance requires that there be site plan approval. And just as a reminder to council, site plan approval is administrative. The ordinance requires that we approve it prior to the construction of construction documents. And construction documents being vertical building plans, and also the horizontal, complete, 100% complete engineering plans. Site plans typically take between two and three reviews, and normally about four months to process from the time of application to approval. So what we would like to do, if council's open to it, is explore ways where we can run the site plan process concurrent with this construction document process. Maybe not in every situation. But at least if you were, if council's open to that, then we can go back with our colleagues in engineering and figure out, kind of delve into it a little bit more on when it makes sense to do that, and maybe sometimes if it doesn't. But it does require an ordinance change, or it would require an ordinance change. So we wanted to have a touch point with council to see if you were amenable to changing that. And again, this is much like the others, it's reducing redundancy in process and looking at the same things, because the site plan is very, is, is about 30% design drawings. So if we can submit all of those drawings at one time, it does put a little bit more risk on the private sector. But in our experience, most of the private sector doesn't stop at 30% drawings. They go all the way to 100, and then just change them based on city's requirements. So there is an opportunity for efficiency, not only for staff, which again, we can deploy that time on other projects and help our other customers, but also could provide some, a whole lot of simplicity for, for private sector partners.
Yes, Wally?
Will it cut the time down from four months to two months, maybe?
It would, yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's money for them.
Correct. Everything could go seamless together as one, as one overarching process. Now, again, it may not apply in every situation, and we need to do a little bit more homework, but we just wanted to see if council was agreeable to that.
I think it's a good idea.
When we come back with it, with something in the ordinance change, then we would have a better idea of exactly how much time and in what circumstances this would best work.
Comments?
I think.
Good. You have that one.
Okay, thank you. I think that's what we have tonight on process improvement. So thank you.
So nothing left?
No, one more.
One more, all right.
Wes Goodyear.
Oh, Wes Goodyear.
Thank you. And while it's being pulled up, I have a brief presentation for you. We wanted to touch base with you on Wes Goodyear, primarily because, as you know, Wes Goodyear is made up of many different developments, so we don't often get a chance to look at Wes Goodyear as a whole. So we wanted to let you know some of the project status, but then also receive direction and make sure, see if there's anything that causes concern, or that council may want us to work with on customers before the applications get to you. So again, we're, we're seeking some direction. There's some requested lot size changes. And we wanted to focus on, on your thoughts on diverse, if we should be looking at diversity by project or by the entirety of Wes Goodyear, the importance that design plays in that decision, and also conversion of commercial land uses. So again, and also for anyone who may be watching, Wes Goodyear is that area that's west of the 303, south of I-10, and north of MC-85, the railroad tracks. There's several developments. There's several developments. And just to give you a bit of a progress on where they are, there's a few developments that we haven't heard from recently. At least they haven't made any formal submittals, a formal pre-application meeting, which are in that light blue color. There are three residential projects in process right now. One formerly known as Rose Gardens, I believe it's Silva Farms now, La Privada and Citrus Park. So they have rezoning applications in with us. So they'll be coming to you in the next few months. And then there's a few more that have had recent changes. And finally, there's several that are in development. Also, just important to note, there's some existing development that is, you know, even though they weren't part of the Wes Goodyear MOU area, I mean, when you think of the geography, they're part of the Wes Goodyear area. And then, as you know too, there's many county islands within Wes Goodyear and county development. So I'm going to throw out some numbers of lot diversity. You know, in the general plan, it states one of the goals is housing diversity, so that there are several different options for housing, so that it can meet the needs of diverse residents, so people can grow in Goodyear, move through several homes in Goodyear. And so just to remember, just a reminder, I know we've gone over these types of things with you before. But there are court home or Z lot, which stands for zero lot line product in the area. 45-foot wide product, which is one of the new products that we added to the zoning ordinance a few years ago. 50 to 55 wide lots, which again, is one of the products added a couple of years ago to the zoning ordinance. And then some of our more typical developments, such as 60, 65 wide lots and 70-plus wide lots. Now, the widths are very important to the development community because they price out their homes on, you know, price per linear foot of frontage, and that's how they get the developments to pencil out. And development costs have been skyrocketing, causing housing prices to skyrocket. So we've been getting lots of requests to reduce lot sizes because that does reduce development costs and home prices. So currently, in the brown, which is on the top, about 10% of the homes are those court homes, 7% are 45s, 37 are in the 50, 55 range, 28% are in the 60, 65, and 19% are 70-foot wide lots or larger. And then if we look at the bottom, what we did is, if those three projects in process were approved by council, that's what the lot mix would look at, like. So court homes, the number of court homes increased a little bit, but the percentage stays about the same. 45-foot wide lots would increase. You can see almost tripling the amount of 45-foot wide lots we would have in the city, going from 7% to 19%. 50 to 55 stays about the same. It's about the same number of lots. The 60 to 65 reduces a little bit, and then you can see the larger lots, 70-plus reduces a little bit as well. Now, I know, I mean, I presume one of your first questions might be, well, what is a healthy lot mix? What is the right lot mix? And, you know, unfortunately, the answer is, well, I can't tell you because there's no standards for these kind of things. I do also want to point out that, just make sure it's clear, that we did not add in the existing developments or the county developments in this. This is just those traditional Wes Goodyear lots. So, you know, most of the county development is acre, half-acre lots, and some of the existing development is typically in the 55 to 65. Cotton flower and canyon trails are in that range. So this could adjust if we added those in. We just used the data we had available to us. So basically, that 45, 55, which is just catching our eye because it was something new we added to the zoning ordinance, and lots of developers are taking advantage of it. So that would go from 44% of total lots to 53% of total lots. It seems like this is okay. We are getting additional inquiries as we go on. I think, you know, and I'm just going to tell you staff's thoughts, and you can disagree if you or agree. You know, we do want to see lot diversity, so I think we wouldn't want to see those 70-plus go down too much more, so that there are some larger lots out there. It is also good to have some court home Z lots out there, too. You don't necessarily need too many, but it's nice to have some of those starter, you know, true starter homes, you know, more affordable homes, especially since this area is in close proximity to a lot of our new industrial developments. So part of the reason it's in demand is because of the job growth. Additionally, wanted to talk about some of the proposals to change commercial. So just one, there's no proposals for multifamily at this time, but there are only two multifamily sites in all of Wes Goodyear, and both of them are the single-family residential developments. And then there are several commercial sites, small commercial sites in Wes Goodyear. Two of them are being proposed to being replaced with single-family residential. And again, we just wanted to let you know that in case that caused council any concerns. We have been, you know, always when somebody proposes taking a potentially revenue generating property and putting residential, we ask for a lot of information from the applicants. And we have received studies from the applicants stating there is an overabundance of commercial. One of the applicants submitted an Elliott Pollak study, so we'd be happy to provide that to you, saying there is plenty of commercial land in the area. And as you know, this is just Wes Goodyear. So as you know, just on the other side of the 303 is the Canyon Trails Town Center. So there is a larger commercial center just across the way. But again, we just wanted to let you know that's coming. So if there were any questions or concerns you might have for staff or the applicant, we can be prepared when we come to you in public hearing. So again, we, I told you, it was going to be pretty brief. We just wanted to let you know what was going on with Wes Goodyear and find out if there was, again, any questions, concerns, research you want to see before these come before you in public hearing. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, just add one more thing. Thank you, Katie. The reason that we're here, Katie did this presentation tonight, is because we have these applications and we have inquiries from others. We really want to help these customers through the process and give them good, solid advice and direction. So we're not wasting anybody's time or effort or money in bringing forth to council what your desires are for the community as well. So we're really seeking some conversation tonight and some input so we can help our customers along and also bring to you all what you expect.
I think what I hear you saying is that you would like us to be familiar, so that we don't, in the middle of a presentation, bring up one of these that we've already, you planned, or we all of a sudden, out of the blue, say, well, I don't like that. And I think, I think you're looking for some solid direction, so that they're not those surprises. Because we always have the applicant in the room, makes it very uncomfortable, and it makes it look like you're not doing your job. Those are the two things I observe. So, so is that sort of what you're looking for tonight? Did I hit it on the head, or did I miss it?
No, I think you did. But ultimately, we want to give good advice to our customers, too.
Sure.
So, and be efficient and helpful.
They're number one.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Sherry?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is a very good idea, just from what I've seen, like in our neighborhood and just driving around, the smaller lots are what is selling. So I'm sure if they weren't selling, they wouldn't be coming to you saying, that's what. Because that's clearly where the demand is. I think it's a good mix. And just if anyone's listening, we still have the requirement on the smaller lots, it has to have more of the aesthetic features. So they're actually dressed up, and it looks really good. So many people want the, more of the lock and leave, the smaller yards, the smaller, less to take care of. So I think it's a great idea, and I'm sure they'll sell out like everywhere else that I see these things building.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing this as well. So I just want to clarify, so what you're proposing is just more of a higher percentage of the lot sizes, essentially? Just more diversity in that amount, right? Is that true?
Thank you. Well, the blue isn't necessarily our proposal, it's if the applicant's proposals were approved.
If they were all approved.
So this is what the landowners are asking for.
Okay.
So again, rather than just look at it at each individual development, we wanted to take a moment and look at Wes Goodyear as a whole.
Need a combination of the numbers.
Because, you know, on an individual development, we can see, oh, all of the 70-foot wide lots are gone. But when you look at all of Wes Goodyear, okay, there, you know, it's not, there's still 1,100 in Wes Goodyear, maybe that's okay. I don't know what the right number is.
Yeah, what the right number is, okay.
That's why we wanted to just check it, and does this look like the right number to you?
Okay, yeah, I do like it. I do like it.
Wally? I'm sorry, I didn't hear, know you were done. Go ahead.
I had another question, too. So, yeah, I think having diversity of housing stock is good for the area there. And then the commercial, yeah, I like to see the studies as well. I'd be curious to see what the research was. I would, there's not much down there. I know the target town center, that Canyon Trails Town Center, isn't fully built out yet. So maybe it doesn't feel like there's a lot of commercial there right now, since the rest of it isn't built out. But I like to think by lots basis down there, they would like to have another commercial area over there. So I'd like to see the research. I'd like to, I personally, if they can sustain it, I would like to see those stay as commercial. Wait for something that would be good for the entire area over there. But that's just my two cents. So, thank you.
Wally?
Well, I like that you're showing us that we have all the different lot widths. Because we still have folks who want the larger lots because they have motorhomes, and they want a motorhome garage, and they don't want to pay storage on them. And it's a nice variety. And I just think that we'll just have to wait and see what the developers say when they come, what do they, you know, where do they fit in this? And I think it's just fine, it's certainly a nice variety out there. And it's really pretty. I've been driving out there, and those houses are beautiful. And they, they look like they're selling like hotcakes. So, and I'm very happy that they're building because for years, we didn't have anything out there. And it's really nice, and I understand about the retail area. But what worries me is if we have little pockets of retail all through there, what is it going to be? A nail salon, you know, a coffee shop? And it's not, I don't know that it would be, that it would work, because you need density, and there's not a lot of density there yet. So I'm just hoping that Canyon Trails Center keeps filling up, and it's really busy. And then if they ever move Romans and get that corner cleaned up, and it's not such a mess, I think that's really going to add to the, to the density as well.
Joe?
No, I agree. The variety and product is important. Market's going to drive it anyway, at some point, whatever the market wants, whether it's going to be the smaller lot or the bigger lots. And as they start building out there, depending on the demand, they may even shift that. But the question I have is, I guess, along the same side, I've been hearing or reading, and I don't know if it's, if it's make-believe or what, it has to deal with the federal government getting involved in local zoning issues for diversity of product and housing. Have you heard anything along those lines? Any push for the federal government to get involved in local, local issues?
So oftentimes, there's talk about the increased cost that local regulation, how that local regulation increases the cost of construction. That's an ongoing, continually ongoing debate. And so, but I haven't heard, and Katie, please chime in, but I haven't heard of anything, anything from the federal, frankly, the state government that says, you know, reduce the cost of development or anything of that nature. There is ongoing debate about that process and those requirements all the time, but nothing that's come down. As a matter of fact, if anything comes down, it would be, it would come from the state, probably not so much from the federal government, because it's more of a states' rights issue. I'll just put my lawyer hat on there, right? But more likely is to come from the state than the federal government. But Katie, I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
I haven't heard anything specific, but-
No, I, you know, I had heard because of affordability and more affordable housing was the push for, maybe the feds would get more involved, but that's fine. I, you know, I don't know, I assume that would mean some type of legislation that, and I would, I would assume it would come back from the state. But in today's world, there's no telling.
Bill?
Christopher, did you have something you wanted to add after Councilmember Campbell spoke before I go?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. If I can, just circle back to your commercial comment, Councilmember Campbell. Those areas are relatively small and are really, would be more geared toward neighborhood commercial, so the nail salon, the coffee shop, a laundry, laundry, dry cleaner, excuse me, things of that nature. Not so much regional commercial, it's more neighborhood scale. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Bill.
My, the, you said these are the only two multifamily that are approved, I think across Cotton Lane, which is now not Wes Goodyear. There are a lot. So I think when we have this discussion about multifamily, when we have something right across the street, it probably wouldn't hurt to show that, because I think we all were stunned when we saw in an executive session the amount of multifamily that had been approved in that area. I think it was shocking. So my jaw hit the table when I only saw these two, and then I remembered that they all were across the street. But having said that, I, I know for a long time, we, these little pocket commercial corners, they're too small, they're too many, they're, I think, 10 years ago, when this all was probably longer than that, 15 years ago, when this was approved, we expected it to be filled with a lot of commercial, because that's what the economy and everything was. I think if we look at it today, there's no way that those commercial spots are going to be filled, especially if we're having trouble filling the ones we've already got, you know, that are already constructed. So what can you put on a commercial site that's either residential or multifamily? I mean, those are the only options, right? Because we're not going to let industrial hit that corner. And it just doesn't make sense for anything else. So when we're looking at the conversion of commercial to something else, and we have a huge quantity of multifamily, I would like to see the push to either zero lot, court home, some single-family owned kind of property there. Not a, not a single-story, I like them, but we have too many of them as well. So we need to, that diversity needs to be in starter homes, something, and if it's court homes or zero lots or whatever it is, all day long, I'll be, I would be okay with But I think multifamily is, I think it's got a tenuous future going forward for us, at least in my opinion, especially out in this particular area. Everything else, I'm okay with.
Yes. Laura?
I do appreciate the diversity of lots to meet every buyer's need. And I would agree with Vice Mayor about the Z lot, the court homes. I think that we do want to find bridges for people to coming, perhaps out of apartments into homeownership, and I think that that provides a good way. I just was curious if these numbers and percentages reflect what's going on in the West Valley as a whole, or is this specific to Goodyear?
Thank you. Great question. I don't have that information. It's kind of tough to find information like this by lot size to try and compare ourselves. Sometimes you can find it by a specific development, like for Vistancia or Eastmark, because those developers have it. But to find it for a larger area, it takes somebody manually doing the research. So I can definitely ask, especially ask the customers, because they often are more in tune with the data that's out there than staff is. Ask if something's available, and if it is, we'll share it with you, absolutely.
And I know we've seen some where there's a mix of lot within the project, which is really nice. It's not the whole thing is just one size, that there's diversity even within the various projects. Lastly, just wanted to talk about the overall look of Wes Goodyear. I know we've had a couple of conversations or comments about the fencing, just sort of the place marking and things like that. And I think that finding ways to tie and unify the whole Wes Goodyear identity would definitely be a plus, especially since they're all diverse developments and just finding whatever those architectural interests or things that can tie them together and with a, make a, make a look.
Anybody else?
Well, it's always interesting to look at the spots of commercial-
Well, it's always interesting, look at the spots of commercial, because I think back how difficult it was on Indian School. It was very difficult to get that going. And there's still a corner down on Pebble Creek, north, I think it is, and Indian School, that was going to be a drugstore at one time. So, and yet, you kind of hope that in that area, there would be some, some little business, like the donut shop, or the coffee shop, or anything. So it's nice, you know, maybe if we can hang on to one of them, that looks like it could be something to do with the community. It's always difficult finding a developer at this stage, and, you know, the trouble we're having, but, you know, you never know, drive-ins are so popular, you never know when that is it. So I'm assuming you still pursue that at all, or, you know, how does that work with you? You show those at all, do they know, I mean, when, or do you not normally know when a small business, you know, looks at something, it's not so small when they build it themselves, so.
Yes, Mayor, if I may, so typically, what happens is, is those commercial corners are already included in a greater master plan, and so the questions we're getting from the development community is, hey, we'd like to include this corner in our rezoning to some single-family.
Okay.
And, and just do away with the commercial. So, we haven't had a lot of interaction with the individual businesses on that, because typically, they're not going to buy the five, or 10, or however many acres it is, they just buy, the small business would just buy a pad site, if you would.
Sure, sure.
So, it's really more of the macro developer, if you will, that's asking us if, if we're supportive of changing their zoning from commercial to something else.
Well, that certainly opens the discussion, I mean.
Thanks, I was also just gonna add, too, that the commercial shown here on Citrus and Yuma, you know, the single family's already developed around there, so that parcel is more likely to stay reserved, so, you know, having concern with, you know, maybe one or two, and then the same with the property on Van Buren and Citrus, that's now the RV park is kind of building all the way to that. So if there was a Walgreens, or a gas station, or the coffee shop, they do have a couple choices of sites to possibly go to.
Good. Anything, where are we now?
That's it for us, just to recapsulate this conversation, council's input, what I heard, was generally, you're supportive of the lot mix that was in the blue, of the proposed, didn't really have any issues, design was important, placemaking in West Goodyear was important, and it would be great if we could hold on to one or so more corners of commercial, but certainly open to having that conversation to convert it.
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure we're hearing you correctly.
We really appreciate the presentation, it was very thoughtful, I mean, it left us actually adding a little bit more to our brain to consider and, and think about, and so, we look, I look forward to seeing the next time we have a meeting, that we actually see some of this in action, and you might remind us that this is from this conference, I mean, this work session we had, because sometimes you get into it, and we do forget those small pieces, and so, I just encourage you to do that, okay?
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna ask the, just to finish up this work session, City Manager Julie, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, council, do you have anything that you request? All right, I'm gonna close this, and then we're gonna open this special meeting, and once we open, then we're gonna let you take a break, if you all would like to have it. So, no further business, this meeting is closed.